eighty is the fastest growing talk radio station in Southern California, home to fifty thousand watts and an audience reach of twelve million listeners. KBLA Talk fifteen eighty is a pioneer for black audio content, including our groundbreaking two million dollar climate justice campaign and the most loyal influential audience. According to an independent research study by the polling firm Eviterus, for the second consecutive year, KBLA Talk fifteen eighty is the most trustworthy, reliable, incredible news source for black audiences and beyond in Southern California. Let KBLA Talk fifteen eighty power your advertising dollars. Our omnichannel custom marketing solutions are specifically tailored to connect with your ideal target audience. We leverage audio, podcasts, streaming, digital, social media, and local activations to get your message out to the black community. Get in touch with our advertising team today at advertising@kbla1580.com. That's advertising@kbla1580.com. KBLA fifteen eighty, we've got you black. KBLA Talk fifteen eighty invites you to join us for a book party celebrating The Covenant with Black America twenty years later. Almost two decades ago, The Covenant book compiled and edited by Tavis Smiley climbed to number one on the New York Times Bestsellers list and stayed there for weeks. The first book by a black owned publisher to achieve such a feat. The urgency of the issues that matter most to black fellow citizens has only intensified, especially in this critical election year. On Wednesday evening, August fourteenth, six to nine P M. Come meet Tavis Smiley alongside Covenant contributors including Cornel West, Connie Rice, Mark Ridley Thomas, Alisa Orduna, Tyrone Howard, and Melina Abdullah as they sign copies of The Covenant with Black America twenty years later. You can purchase your books onsite and get them autographed. That's Wednesday evening, August fourteenth, six to nine P M. In the city of Los Angeles. Admission is free, but you must register at kbla1580.com. At KBLA Talk fifteen eighty, we've got you black.
First things first, it's the D U general money B. I'mma put you up on the schedule. Six to nine, eight weekdays, not doing several years. We got a lot to talk about, so much to pedal through. Unapologetically progressive, tune to KBLA fifteen eighty to get the message. Where your ancestors favorite radio station. First black on talk radio left side of the nation. Me and Dominique De Prima go way back. Tavis Smiley making sure the station stays black. Discussing all the issues in our community. The host of black and brown and others find unity. So let's talk about it. Everybody can improve it. Digital underground always down with the moon. So we tune in, first things first with the queen of black talk radio. Dominique De Prima, go sis.
KBLA Talk fifteen eighty. Good morning and God bless. I'm Dominique De Prima. This show is First Things First and my first thing today and every day, giving thanks, giving praises, asking for blessings from God Almighty, the ancestors, the elders, and let's go, let's go, let's go. We got a lot to talk about. Hour one, we look local. Hour two, we go national, international, and beyond on a Talking Point Tuesday. And hour three, we do a deep dive on a hot topic or a person of interest. Today, we'll be welcoming the legendary Dell Phonics. And they will be sharing their journey with us. A little musical taste, if you will, for your Tuesday. I am excited to have with me live in the studio this morning. My, the council member, he's not actually in my district, but I feel like he's my council member because I see him everywhere I go. He has been on the City Council of Los Angeles since 2013, making positive changes in South Central Los Angeles. He's a native of the district and he's spearheaded efforts to increase wages, enhance worker protections, stimulate economic growth, and cultivate a cleaner, safer environment. Councilmember Curran Price, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning. Great to see you.
You too, Dominique.
You've got a big shindig this weekend. All are invited in, in the city of Compton.
Well, no, city of Los Angeles.
City of Los Angeles, okay.
We're, we're going to be celebrating the South L A Greenway. And it's going to take place at Augustus Hawkins Park, which is on Slauson and Compton.
Ah, okay, that's why I thought it was Compton.
But no, this is going to be an exciting day to celebrate the, the importance of healthy living, being outside. You know, this station has certainly pioneered the discussion of, of climate justice.
Yeah.
And so this effort is certainly consistent with that as we, as we talk about things that we can do to, to address climate change and pollution, et cetera. And one thing is getting people outdoors and enjoying the spaces that, that we have.
The spaces that we do have. I mean, it's one of the things about Los Angeles. It's super expensive here and we have a lot of challenges. But one of the blessings is great weather, you know, green spaces and that ability to do things all year long.
All year round. And we want to build on that. We're, we're really excited about the Rail to River project. This is the metro project that's removing the rail lines along Slauson, replacing them with a walking and bike path. This is going to be extraordinary infrastructure in South L A from Hyde Park all the way to, to Alameda.
The thing about that is it's one of those parts of South L A that I just always thought would be that way. Just these trashy, I mean, trashed up, crazy looking old railroad tracks, which, you know, don't really serve a purpose per se.
Oh, no, and you know, as a native, many of us know that they've been around for thirty or forty years, unused.
Right.
So it's just been a real eyesore. And so to transform this into a walking bike path is going to be really exciting. It's, it's underway now. Construction is in progress.
In case we were wondering what that construction is. There's so much construction in L A now. It's kind of hard to keep track of what's doing, what for whom. But that, so basically, all of those railroad tracks that we know and don't love are going to be like a long park?
It's going to be a walking bike path, yes. Encouraging folks to, to exercise, to, to take in the, the air. And more excitedly, to, to take part with the parks. There are going to be four parks along this corridor that we're really excited about. One exists already and the others are in construction. The Gus Hawkins Nature Park, where the event will be, is the city's only nature park. And it's, it's got an extraordinary resources there for families and kids. And we're really excited to be hosting the event there. A little further down on Slauson and, Slauson Wall, there's going to be a four acre park. And it's still, still in development. So that's going to be very exciting. And then further, further east on Slauson and Figueroa, there's going to be a Bill Green Park, a, a, a memorial park dedicated to Bill Green, former Senator here in, in South L A.
Wow.
And then, and then it just could continue on five may.
Of course.
And then at the Slauson and Normandy, we're going to have the Slauson Connect Education and Health Center. And so that's going to be a real, another exciting educational, recreational facility for our community. All along Slauson, all a part of this Greenway.
Growing up in, in South L A, in, in Los Angeles, council member, did you ever dream about, you know, changing that? Or did you ever think about it? I mean, are any of these things that you're working on now, things that you imagined as a kid? Or it's just your, your wildest dream?
Well, I think it's a combination. Certainly as, as a kid, you have wild dreams about doing big things.
Right.
But.
Pirate ships.
But, yeah, but, but, but more importantly, I think, it's just being invested in the community, understanding what's going on and wanting to do, to do more and to do better. And that's sort of been my motivation as an elected official.
And our climate, you know, our KBLA Climate Justice, which you've been supportive of since the beginning. I mean, this, these are the kinds of things we want to engage with and promote. And I think sometimes we're all so busy in our lives, we don't realize, you know, that we don't have as much green space as we really could, especially in the communities where a lot of black people live in Los Angeles.
Well, you know, South L A is notorious for, for, for being park poor. And so, and we don't have these resources that, that other communities have and benefit from. And that's why when we do have these resources, we need to take advantage of them. And the, this Rail to River project is really going to be an opportunity to, to engage in a number of, 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 of opportunities along that corridor in ways that we haven't before.
So just for this event, it's Saturday. And it starts, the registration and breakfast starts at nine. The program goes for, from ten to two. It's at Augustus Hawkins Nature Park. You've got free food, sound baths, activities, yoga, zumba, tree adoptions, and all kinds of stuff going on. You said it's an, it's an, it's an effort to encourage people to take advantage of that green space.
Correct. And to encourage families and, and kids especially to, to come out and to, to be a part, to be a part of the area in ways that they haven't before. And this, again, this Greenway is something that we are trying to encourage. In other words, the Rail to River bike, bike path, walking path, that's going to cross these parks is going to be an opportunity, again, to, to, to partake in not just the, the, the beauty of the area, but also the physical opportunities. And, and it's not just these parks along Slauson, but we also have three parks along the Avalon Corridor. We've got the Wetlands Park, we've got South Park, and Gil Lindsay Park, all along that Avalon Corridor served by bike lanes.
It's amazing, actually, how many bikes we do have in our community, right? We don't always have the bike paths, you know, as, as we've heard and seen. But a lot of folks, and I feel like more and more with gas prices and the challenges of inflation in our economy, which I know is global. It's not just in the United States, but a lot more people are taking to those bikes. So it's nice to see that development in South L A.
And we got to encourage, especially with our, our youth. You know, my hope is that our youth will be the biggest beneficiaries of this, of this Greenway. Encouraging the activities outside, encouraging walking, encouraging biking, encouraging, taking part in physical activity. And so, again, our youth can be the real beneficiaries of this project.
And there's a health aspect too, right? I mean, like you said, it's not just beauty. One of the things, we had a neuroscientist on the show not long ago who was talking about how when it gets hotter and hotter, our brains make us more and more aggressive. So it's not just that we're grouchy and, you know, we're grouchy because it's a heat wave, or we're grouchy because the climate is changing. But actually, it, it has an impact on our physiology.
Yeah, it does. And, and we can control some of that. We can control that by, by being out, by exercising, by understanding the, the nature that's around us and taking part in it. And, and again, these are resources that we can, that we can leverage in ways that we haven't before and that we have to.
Yeah. I want to talk more about this, what is the green corridor? And, you know, you have big plans, say, predate KBLA jumping on this issue. But, and, and they will have an impact, I would imagine, in South L A for years to come. We'll look at that when we come forward on KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
She's reclaiming her time on KBLA Talk fifteen eighty. More First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward. Tavis is like George and Wheezy. He's moving on up. Last year, Tavis was number forty-five on the Talkers Magazine list of the one hundred most important radio talk show hosts in America. Wait for it, wait for it. The twenty twenty-four list was recently released, and Tavis has jumped to number thirty-three on the list of the nation's most important talkers, making him the highest ranked African American on the coveted roster. Congratulations to Tavis Smiley from all of us at KBLA Talk fifteen eighty. We've got you black, black, black.
To help combat climate change, L A D W P is helping neighborhoods have better access to electric vehicles by awarding nearly one hundred thirty million dollars in E V rebates to customers just like you. From big savings on used E Vs to building new charging plazas, L A D W P is charging ahead to help all Angelinos experience the benefits of E Vs. Get rebates of up to four thousand dollars for a used E V and one thousand seven hundred fifty dollars for a charger. Learn more at ladwp.com/ev. That's ladwp.com/ev.
Looks like Bobby needs a ride again.
Grab the keys.
Let's take Auntie to the swap meet.
Grab the keys.
Whether you're giving rides or hauling gear, do it all in a Chevy SUV. Head to your local Chevy dealer. Where well qualified buyers get one point nine percent A P R on all twenty twenty-four Silverado fifteen hundred, Blazer E V, Equinox, Trailblazer, and Colorado models. Chevrolet, together, let's drive.
One point nine percent A P R for thirty-six months. Monthly payment is twenty-eight sixty for every thousand dollars you finance. Example down payment seventeen point zero percent. Must finance with Gem Financial. Some customers may not qualify. Not available with leasing, some other offers. Take me retail delivery by seven thirty-one twenty-four.
This is it. Shop the Lowe's Closeout Event to get up to seventy percent off select major appliances for your home. Plus, get up to sixty percent off select patio furniture and accessories for your outdoor spaces. So hurry into your local store today because these deals are too good to last. Shop them now before they're gone because Lowe's knows savings. Lowe's knows home improvement. Valid through eight seven while supplies last. Selection varies by location.
Don't settle for bumps and groans and itch due to dry skin. Try Venus for pubic hair and skin. The razor and regimen specifically designed for your pubic area. Featuring a razor with patented irritation defense bar and skincare regimen that is dermatologist and gynecologist tested. Venus helps protect your pubic skin from shave irritation. Discover the full regimen of products at GilletteVenus.com.
Your ancestors' favorite radio station. Radio station. And your favorite morning show host. Let's get back to Dominique De Prima right now.
Dominique De Prima with the council member for the new ninth district, council member Curran Price. If you've got a question, you can call us, eight hundred nine two oh fifteen eighty. They are doing the thing in the chat. Councilmember Price, it's at KBLA fifteen eighty and inside of YouTube, in case you ever want to come hang out with us in the chat. Molly Bell's sending blessings to you live on the radio right now in real time. So this vision that you have for a green corridor inside of the ninth district, which is downtown in South L A. Break that down to me. What does that look like? What does it encompass?
Well, it encompasses building on the infrastructure that's there and, and it's coming there. I mentioned the, the Rail to River project that's being constructed along Slauson, walking paths, bike paths, landscaped areas, places to sit, et cetera. And we, on top of that, we've got these parks that are a part of that process as well. The Gus Hawkins Nature Park certainly being an anchor. But these other three parks that are going to be coming online, it's going to be very exciting resources for the community.
So it's linking all of the green space.
Correct.
With the bike path and enhancing the green space itself.
Correct. It's linking the bike, the, the parks along Slauson Corridor and along Avalon.
So it's really almost like two green corridors.
Yes, yes.
And it's, I mean, I've seen some renderings and stuff like that. It looks, I mean, just absolutely stunning.
Well, we hope that over the years, it'll grow out and, and really be a Greenway. Very lush, greenery that identifies that area as you're coming down Slauson.
And so.
And welcomes you.
Yeah, which is nice because, I mean, I'm no, well, I shouldn't say no shade because there literally isn't any shade right there. But it's a.
And few trees.
It's not how I, you know, it's not how we think of that stretch of Slauson as being welcoming.
Well, it's going to be, it's got to be reimagined. And I think the, the, the metro project is certainly one way of reimagining it with the walking and bike paths along that corridor. But, but also taking advantage of the parks that exist and that are being planned.
Right.
That are a part of that infrastructure.
Well, yeah, and it makes sense. I mean, it's kind of cool to be able to go from park to park on your bike.
Or to walk, or to walk, or to walk.
Yeah, to stroll along for sure. Of course, for, well, okay, so how are you funding this whole thing?
Well, we are using some public money, some foundation money, and certainly looking for any kind of other resources that might be available. Aside from the new construction that will take place with the, with the parks and the Rail to River, the Rail to River project alone is about a hundred and forty million dollar project funded by, funded by Metro. It's a real serious commitment they're making to South L A. And of course, it's our responsibility to make sure that our parks are up and, and making sure they have the resources they need to provide resources to our community as well.
The, the first thing we often think, I'm not going to lie, as residents of South Los Angeles, when we see improvement is, oh, gentrification. That can't be for us. That has to be for the people that are coming in. I'm sure you, this is not the first time you've heard that.
No, no, and, you know, I want to stress that these resources are for us here now. And as I suggested, that, you know, one of our, I think our biggest beneficiaries are going to be our youth, who can take advantage of these open spaces, these green spaces to, to learn, to grow, to become more healthy. But no, it's not to, we're not trying to displace anybody. We're trying to make this area more livable like other communities are.
Key point, like other communities are, there, there was a really interesting article by Capitol in Maine, talking about how within Los Angeles city limits, shade trees and green space is really like stratified. The wealthier the community, the more shade, which is ironic considering that the less well resourced the community, the less likely we are to have air conditioning units in our homes and other ways of cooling down. The average tree canopy, according to this article, across Los Angeles is twenty-one percent. But in South L A and Pacoima, it's only five to seven percent. In Brentwood, it's up to forty percent. So we're talking about a huge contrast. And I wonder if this green belt or two green belts that you're talking about addresses that.
Well, it's a start. It's certainly, you know, in, in a couple of years, it's not going to shift that balance, that imbalance that, that exists currently. But it is a start and it's a recognition that we know how important these resources are. And so that hopefully we'll take better, better care of them and take advantage of what they have to offer.
I mean, according to this professor of environmental sciences, Michael Jarrett at UCLA, there's evidence that in areas with more greening, there's reduced A D H D, reduced cardiovascular illness, respiratory illness, less depression and better pregnancy outcomes. That I didn't know. We know that's an issue for, for black maternal health. So I just, it's funny when we, we could just say, oh, bike paths and parks, but it's so much more than that, isn't it?
It is, it is much more than that. And as I said before, that's why I think our, our greatest beneficiaries can be our youth.
Yeah.
Who can really take advantage, our youth and our seniors, who can take advantage of this unique network of, of, of resources and, and use them in a way that will benefit individuals and the community as well.
Yeah, this is one of those things, you know, I have to ask every council person and county employee that I talk to, because as a resident of South L A, I, I read about how we don't have shade. And, and then I just see them like chopping these trees down to little sticks. And I don't understand, it's like, we're going to, we're planting a thousand trees, but we're going to cut the ones on your block down to toothpicks.
Well, again, we've got to be better advocates. And that's why I think this climate justice effort is so important from the station, KBLA, because it is bringing greater awareness, greater understanding, greater appreciation of the importance of, of outdoor space, of, of green space. And doing it in a way that makes a difference. And so the time is now and we've got to take advantage of these resources that we have.
I'm excited to see this coming to South L A. I, I also want to point out that the UCLA Public Health Researchers last year found that if we could get the green space in South Los Angeles up to the median, not up to Brentwood levels, just up to like twenty percent, not the forty percent, we could see the residents gain months of added life expectancy. That's insane.
It is, it is. And, and again, that, that focuses on not just the adults and seniors, but youth.
Right.
And again, the opportunity to create healthy lifestyles is something that we just should be encouraging. And so at, at our event on Saturday, we'll be experiencing a variety, as I said, from, from, from yoga to meditation to sound baths, to just encouraging folks to really explore, understand, and learn what's available and how they can be more healthy and, and to encourage a more healthy lifestyle.
Hmm. What is, how, what is adopting a tree? What does that really mean?
Well, we're going to give you, we're going to give you a tree to take home.
Okay.
And, and hopefully you will care for it and properly and let it grow.
Okay, so you can get a tree, get yourself a tree.
That's right.
Um, I, you know, because apparently these kinds of deficits are historical. You know, where we live, we're black people and Latinos too, tend to live in the city, are areas that were redlined, that started off not having the resources and the green space. So we're talking about not just that we don't like trees or we are cursed or whatever folks think. It's because there's this historical deficit in infrastructure in, in green space within our neighborhood.
Yeah, the imbalance and it's, and it's apparent. You know, when you look at a, a school ground, for example, playground, it's all kind, all asphalt, you know, and that's, you know, on the elementary school campus. That's ridiculous. We should be trying to encourage open space, green space, encourage kids to, to be outside and to enjoy. And, you know, you don't want to do that on concrete or on cement, but it should be on grass and on dirt and really enjoying nature as, as it was meant to be enjoyed.
I mean, yeah, you know, kids, kids will find the concrete and the dirt. But I mean, it's nice to, to be able to offer more. And I just want to put that in, in perspective as part of a whole green kind of movement. I mean, we've heard about, you know, under Garcetti, a Green New Deal. I remember Mayor Antonio Villarosa talking about planting trees. So this is a long, these are longtime goals for the city.
Right. Long, long time and current goals. So, you know, our current mayor, Mayor Bass has been adamant about, you know, insisting on we, that we work hard to identify sustainable efforts and practices that will make a difference. And so we think this is consistent with our efforts in that regard.
Yeah, this might seem like a sidebar, but I read this article, I think it was L A Times, no, it was the New York Times, about how with the temperatures getting hotter, and I guess we're looking at another, you know, increasing trend over the weekend, that, that actual concrete, those sidewalks can actually burn folks.
Oh, yeah.
It's especially for the unhoused and kids, it's important to have grass.
Yep, yep.
I mean, serious burns, that's, and you're, you know, you can't walk your dog on that. When it gets over ninety, you, you need to either.
You know, that's why we have cooling centers to get.
Yeah.
Folks, you know, out of the heat, especially seniors, especially youth. And so having places to go where they can be comfortable and safe and healthy is important.
Things we take for granted. You know, we got news traffic and sports right here, but Miles and I, we're talking about how there's no cooling centers in Las Vegas. So when it goes up to a hundred plus degrees, people are just.
Out there.
They're just out there. And we can find those on three one one?
Yes.
Call three one one, find out where there's a cooling center near you. Even if it's not for you, if it's for mama or grandma, it's good to know where those are.
And especially at our senior centers. That's, uh, we've been making an effort to make sure those resources are available.
Okay. Uh, we're talking to L A City Councilmember Curran Price. I'm Dominique De Prima for KBLA Talk fifteen eighty.
More First Things First with Dominique De Prima when we come forward.
I'm Mike Moore. Here's the latest from the Black Information Network. The U S is rolling out a new aid package for Ukraine. The Biden administration announced yesterday that the U S will soon send two hundred million dollars in air defenses and other weapons to Ukraine. Former President Donald Trump is coming to Illinois this week. His campaign says he's attending the National Association of Black Journalists Convention in Chicago tomorrow. Trump will participate in a Q and A with political journalists that will concentrate on issues facing the black community. In Memphis, Tennessee, the trial for the men accused of killing African American rapper Young Dolph is now scheduled for September. Action News Five reporting Justin Johnson and Cornelius Smith were originally scheduled to go before a judge in March before the trial was moved to June and now set to start September twenty-third. And that's the latest. I'm Mike Moore from your twenty-four seven news source, the Black Information Network and B I N news dot com.
Bank of America has powerful digital solutions for local and global businesses so you can make every move matter. Visit bankofamerica.com slash banking for business to learn more. Bank of America, N A, copyright twenty twenty-four.
This is the KBLA Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
The U S women's basketball team had no trouble at all in their first game in the Summer Olympics in Paris. They beat Japan by twenty-six. Fifty-six straight wins for the U S women in Olympic competition, a streak that started in nineteen ninety-two in Barcelona. Asia Wilson had twenty-four points and thirteen rebounds. Next game for the women's team is Saturday against Belgium. The U S men's basketball team is off until Wednesday. They have a second round matchup against South Sudan. Simone Biles confirmed she will compete today in the women's gymnastic team finals. Biles suffered a mild calf strain on Sunday. Simone is trying to become the first gymnast in the world, male or female, to win five gold medals in the same Olympics. The Dodgers and Angels are back on the field tonight after a day off yesterday. The Dodgers are in San Diego. The Angels are at home against Colorado. No debates, no speculation, just the info you need. That's your KBLA Sports Minute. I'm Ray Richard. I'm Ray Richardson. More news, opinions and conversation when we come forward on KBLA Talk 1580.
When you turn to the Employment Development Department, we'll help you get there. Whether it's support for you and your family while you find a new job or the resources to focus on your recovery after illness or injury, we can help you move forward. From support while you bond with your newborn to helping serve your family while your partner serves our country. Your EDD will help you get there. For more information, visit E D D dot C A dot gov.
Hey, LA residents, it's planting season and the perfect time to get shade trees growing around your home. LADWP and City Plants are giving every resident up to seven free trees. That's right, seven free trees delivered right to your door. Trees are great for the environment, help improve air quality and can help you save on your bill when you use less air conditioning to stay cool indoors. Learn more at L A D W P dot com slash free trees. That's L A D W P dot com slash free trees.
We've got a lot to talk about.
I'm Revenger, the life coach. Is someone you love struggling with addiction and mental illness? Is improving your family's health important? Want to leave a legacy that your family can grow? Are you ready to enhance your perception of life experiences? Then wake up weekends at 7:00 AM with Urban Family Focus and get the wisdom, opportunity, resources and motivation to live your best life. Join the conversation on Urban Family Focus, Saturday and Sunday at 7:00 AM.
An apologetically progressive, KBLA Talk 1580. We've got your black.
Oh no, stomach issues again?
Stomach issues?
Who are you?
Your pancreas. I could be the real reason for your diarrhea, gas, bloating, stomach pain or loose oily stools.
I thought it was my stomach.
People often do, but any of these symptoms could mean having a condition called exocrine pancreatic insufficiency or EPI. With EPI, the pancreas doesn't release enough enzymes to break down food, but EPI is manageable. Use the symptom checker on identifyepi.com and speak with your doctor. That's identifyepi.com. Sponsored by Abvi.
Did you know your life insurance is an asset you can sell? I'm Jay Jackson, CEO of Abacus Life. For almost 20 years, Abacus has been purchasing life insurance policies from seniors just like you. And at abacuspays.com, we've created a free policy value calculator so you can find out the worth of your policy in just seconds. There are no fees and no obligations. Get real value from your life insurance when you need it with Abacus. Learn more at abacuspays.com.
What if the conversation about menopause and bladder leaks didn't have to be a secret? Always Discreet helps you embrace this new chapter with confidence, offering a bladder leak solution that keeps you worry free. Its rapid dry cord quickly locks away even the biggest gushes with up to zero leaks, zero wet feel and zero odor. So you can jump, dance, sneeze and laugh uninterrupted. Everyday protection for every level of leak. We've got you always. Try Always Discreet today.
Thanks for waking up with Dominique DePrima on KBLA Talk 1580.
Well, the, the chat is, uh, the YouTube chat is quite robust. Um, and I just learned something that I did not know, uh, from Councilmember Curran Price, who's my guest this morning, which is that park where your event is on Saturday morning was.
It was an old pipe yard years and years ago for, uh, D W P.
That got converted into a park. So just like we're talking about taking some of these, uh, plots of land that are owned by the city or metro or old buildings and converting them into housing, the same is, has been done with green space.
Yes, but not enough, that's for sure.
Not enough, right. So, um, Courtney Edward says, we need housing, get your head out of the sand, you're not Johnny Appleseed. Talk to me about what you're doing around housing.
Well, you know, housing is certainly, certainly very important. It's a priority, uh, in addition to making sure we have enough open space. But I'm very proud that over the past 10 years, we've built several thousand units of, not only affordable housing, but also homeless housing. And I'm going to continue doing that as long as I am in office. Housing is important.
When we see stuff going up, you know, I feel like I see a lot of apartment buildings just getting quickly built. How do we know what that is? Is there some way to find out? Cause you, you always suspect it's not for us, it's not affordable.
One thing we do need to do a better job in letting folks know what, what properties are available, units are available. Many of the units that are going up are for, uh, uh, they're housing, affordable housing, sometimes subsidized housing. Uh, and so there are limitations, but they're listed to get on, you have to get on a list to get eligible for the property.
And how would you find out about that list?
Contact the council officer, contact the housing department right here in the city.
Okay, so if it's in your district, contact you or the housing.
Correct, but, but you certainly can get access to information on housing that's available across the city. You gotta do a little digging, but there are projects come up, they've got to announce and inform folks.
Got to do a little digging, you got to stay on top of it. Because what I'm hearing from folks are, are looking at housing is that, um, many times when those subsidized and affordable projects come up, it's not even people from our communities that are getting those spots.
That's why it's important that we be vigilant and that we be very cautious of what's going on.
So in other words, other people are tracking it and we're not necessarily.
Especially if there's federal money involved, you know, you can't say that only, only these folks can, can get access to it. Only these folks can apply.
Right.
It's got to be open. And so when that occurs, sometimes we, we lose out.
So that's, uh, Paul Lee says, um, there's tons, people got to understand a ton of plots of land are owned by private owners that are just sitting on them. Is that true?
Uh, that's true. I don't know if it's a ton, but, um, I don't know if it's a ton, but there are a lot of properties that are privately owned and individuals, you know, can decide what they want to do with it or not. And we, we can't control that, uh, so we can appeal and try to encourage. Uh, but you know, you can't make someone do something with their property.
You can't, well, I mean, eminent domain, but that's considered pretty extreme, right?
It's very extreme and, and people don't, don't like to use that as a tool.
Are the so-called graffiti towers, are they in your district?
No, they aren't.
Okay, I'mma, I'mma hold off on that because it's not your district. I think that's, um, I know who's the district.
But I, but I understand, yes, the DeLio's district. But I, I do understand there are several parties in acquiring the property, so we'll see what happens.
Yeah, well, I would, to me, those would be great candidates for eminent domain. You start building something and you don't even finish it and then you're draining our city budget? I don't think so. Talk to me about the Olympics. And, you know, is that how you see it impacting? I mean, we're in the middle of the Olympics now. The mayor, um, city is over there and there's a whole delegation checking out how Paris is doing it. How do you see that impacting South LA?
Well, it's going to impact South LA in a very positive way, we hope. We know that the Olympics is going to really have citywide impact and we want to make sure that we get, we get a good bang here. Recently, uh, we've agreed to renovate the convention center, for example, and that's going to be a major focus.
We had to do that anyway though, right? It was pretty.
We had to do it.
Run down for actual conventions.
We had to do it and if we're serious about, uh, getting the larger conventions and about being a visible location during the Olympics.
I mean, I say that because I know there is a group called No Olympics and I know there are people who are always concerned about, myself included, about, you know, the unhoused getting criminalized or jailed or spending money on frivolous things because it's the Olympics and we're trying to, you know, put on our, our Sunday best.
Yeah, well, having said that, it is going to be an exciting opportunity and a real unique, uh, chance for black businesses, uh, to, to make some money.
Yeah.
And we want to be able to encourage that. And so we've been working with the mayor, making sure that folks are aware of, of opportunities that are coming up and that they are prepared to take advantage of them when they're available.
I'm, I'm assuming that's the city's, uh, Department of Economic Development website that you would, uh, track that on?
That's correct. And, and also the, your council office, I think, can provide you with some information as well. We all are very conscious about this and so want to be on top of it.
Um, and even before that, we have the World Cup.
Mm-hmm, there, there are a number of activities coming up that we want to be able to take advantage of. And so those are two.
If we have our, our stuff together, there's, there's a lot of opportunity coming, what in the next five years?
That's right, in terms of goods and services.
Right. Well, it's good to know we can call the council office for, you know, information on stuff like that. How hard is it for you? Or it doesn't seem like it's hard, but I know you're, you know, you, you're back on all your committees. How much of, um, of a hardship is it for you dealing with the, you know, legal troubles that you have at the moment and being able to serve?
Well, it certainly is a, is a, is a strain and, and some stress. But I'm, uh, I'm confident that I'm going to be vindicated. I didn't do anything wrong and, and that will be proven. But in the meantime, I've got a job to do and I'm going to be doing that.
Yeah, I mean, I've, um, I feel like I still see you everywhere. Um, so somehow you're, you're getting it done. One of the places I usually see you is at the African Focus.
Yes.
Uh, Goodwill Awards. I think I've seen you ever since before I was the, usually the MC like I'm.
Last several ones, right, you were there.
Yeah. Why is that something you like to do?
Well, you know, I had a chance to travel to Africa when I was, uh, in college.
Wow, in college, okay.
Yeah, I was in college, I had a, a travel grant to go around the continent. It was Africa, uh, about two and a half months going from east coast to the west coast.
Oh, wow.
And so really cemented my interest and appreciation for, for the culture, for the opportunities uh, and for, uh, for having some fun. And so it's been a real lifelong experience for me, enjoying, uh, the continent, enjoying people, places, making friends and really understanding myself better.
Jen Williams says, good morning, I live in Curran Price's district. I'm excited about the park opening, but most of the street lights don't work and the sidewalks have too much trash, streets should be walkable too.
I agree, uh, it's been a real problem. In fact, uh, my office created a, uh, a sanitation group. Uh, we pick up trash, debris, bulky items, uh, to supplement what the city is doing because the city has not been doing a good job, quite frankly. And you're right, our streets should be clean, sidewalks should be passable. Uh, and folks should not have, uh, trash, debris, bulky items, uh, cluttering their way.
Yeah, I mean, we, you know, we can do our part in terms of trying not to throw the trash, but I know that, uh, how does that work? Do, um, do wealthier communities, because of their tax base, have, have more cleanup services? How does that work? I know in the city budget, they're all supposed to be equally distributed, right?
Yeah, it's supposed to be, but it just, it doesn't happen that way, unfortunately. And you're right, uh, some areas get more attention than others and that's why it's important to be a squeaky wheel. You gotta complain. And, uh, you know, I tell my constituents all the time, uh, it's important to call in, to, uh, express complaints, concerns, because if you don't, then the, the, the system feels that there are no problems, that you're not concerned about anything. And so you gotta, you gotta complain, you gotta be a squeaky wheel.
And so, and a lot of those meetings and, and council offices and such that you can call or email, they're listed on the city website?
Yes, you can easily find them.
Yeah, la city.gov.
And everybody that's interested in District Nine, you can reach me at 213-473-7009.
I know that the, um, Police Commission meeting, for example, will have a lot of calls this morning after watching that man get punched in the face, um, by a cop on camera. And here we are with another super hot summer. Uh, want to talk about, uh, she's saying, yeah, she's talking about the lights. Um, whether it's lights, policing, or whether it's, um, uh, trash. I have someone in my DM saying there's, um, over off of 91st Street. Uh, it's really improved over there, but the alleys are a problem. And particularly in and around Central and Avalon. So how exactly, uh, you can respond and, and what can be done about that? We'll take a look when we come forward on KBLA Talk 1580.
A safe place to go loud, loud, a great place for progressive politics. KBLA Talk 1580.
I spray and scrub, but the soap scum in my bathtub is still there.
I spray and scrub, but the burnt sauce on my stove top sticks around.
Sprays can leave grime behind, but new Mr. Clean Ultra Foamy Magic Eraser combines the scrubbing power of an eraser with the cleaning power of dawn to melt away tough messes on contact.
Just wet, squeeze and erase.
Stop spraying, start erasing and clean with more magic than ever with new Ultra Foamy Magic Eraser.
Finding a path to a meaningful career, one where you're making an impact and making enough money, it can be tough. There's one path though, that many young adults are landing on that leads them to careers where they can work outdoors, protect our environment, take on climate change and get paid while they train. It's the California Conservation Corps. You just have to be 18 through 25 years old to enroll or a US military veteran through age 29 and you have to be a California resident. That's it. There's no education requirement, no employment history needed. Some Corps members need to finish up high school, others are college grads. But during their one year of service, all CCC Corps members can earn the work experience and certifications needed to become a wildland firefighter, forestry technician, install solar or build trails in our state parks. Learn how you can enroll at ccc.ca.gov. Do this for you. Become the person you want to be through the California Conservation Corps.
Aw, man, looks like Bobby needs a ride to the airport, ugh.
Grab the keys.
Oh, who's taking Auntie and her friends to the swap meet?
Grab the keys.
How about we, uh, drop these boxes off at Miss Johnson?
Grab the keys.
Whether you're giving rides or hauling gear, you're all about getting things done. So do it all in a Chevy SUV. From the versatile Equinox and Sporty Blazer to the roomy Traverse, our lineup of SUVs will carry you through every adventure. All you have to do is.
Grab the keys?
That's how we do. Head to your local Chevy dealer where well-qualified buyers get 1.9% APR on all 2024 Silverado 1500, Blazer EV, Equinox, Trailblazer and Colorado Monos. Chevrolet, together, let's drive.
1.9% APR for 36 months. Monthly payment is 2860 for every thousand dollars you finance. Example down payment, 17.0%. Must finance with Gem Financial. Some customers may not qualify. Not available with leasing, some other offers. Take new retail delivery by 7/31/24.
KBLA Talk 1580. We've got a lot to talk about.
KBLA Talk 1580 believes in community empowerment. LA's 99 neighborhood councils form the grassroots level of the Los Angeles city government. The system was created to connect LA's diverse communities to City Hall. While neighborhood council board members are volunteers, they are also public officials elected to office by the members of their community. Neighborhood councils advocate on issues like homelessness, housing, land use, emergency preparedness, public safety, parks, transportation and sustainability. They also provide local expertise on the delivery of city services to their various communities. Neighborhood councils are open to participation by anyone who is a part of the fabric of daily life in said community. This includes those who live, work or own property or a business. If you are interested in stepping up to join your local neighborhood council, visit www empowerla.org. That's empowerla.org. It's time to think globally, but act locally. This is a community call to action from KBLA Talk 1580.
Watch out. You got me.
The galaxy is safe once again.
In the pretend universe, kids play with pretend guns. In the real world, it's up to us to make sure they don't get their hands on a real gun. If you have a gun in the house, keep it locked, unloaded and stored separately from ammunition. Safe gun storage saves lives. Learn how to make your home safer at nfamilyfire.org. That's nfamilyfire.org. Brought to you by N Family Fire, Brady and the Ad Council.
Eggs are a staple in our diets and there's only one egg with more delicious farm-fresh taste plus superior nutrition. Eggland's Best. With more vitamins, including six times more vitamin D and 10 times more vitamin E plus 25% less saturated fat than ordinary eggs. Available in so many delicious varieties, classic, cage-free and organic. Eggland's Best, better taste, better nutrition, better eggs.
Reggie was a nurse for 16 years.
I had become very burnt out. I wasn't making good money.
Then it happened.
There was an ad for My Computer Career and it just spoke to me.
My computer career was the best decision he ever made.
I could study anywhere from my laptop and I was working in the first couple of weeks of me being in class.
Reggie hit a home run.
The field is teeming with jobs.
Become an IT pro in just months with zero experience at mycomputercareer.edu.
The school is amazing.
It's not rocket science, it's mycomputercareer.edu. This is one student's experience, individual results vary.
Tune into More Than That with Gia Peppers, live this Sunday at 4:00 PM or wherever you listen to podcasts. This episode of More Than That is brought to you by Buick. Combining beauty and technology to deliver luxurious experiences. Buick, exceptional by design.
Heard any other talk radio lately that sounds anything like this? I didn't think so. You're listening to Anapologetically Progressive, KBLA Talk 1580.
Yes, indeed, a lot to talk about. Uh, so, um, I got an anonymous person in my DMs talking about the alleys over there by Avalon.
Yeah, well, those have been a real problem for us, uh, from the very beginning. Uh, you know, the alleys, District Nine, first of all, has the largest network of alleys in the city.
Really?
Yeah, you know, just because it's an older, older part of the city. But, uh, the alleys, as, as we know, are, uh, you know, dens for that trash, debris, bulky items, criminal activity. Uh, and so we've taken steps not only to clean the alleys, but to try to transform them. And so we've created, uh, areas where the alleys have been cleaned, we've landscaped them, there are walking paths in the alleys. And so it's a real, we call them green alleys. And so it's. And so it's a real resource that can benefit the neighborhood. Because alleys can be a real problem, but they can also be a benefit.
C W Real Estate says, tell them to open a 311 ticket. I'm quick to do that. There's an app. You don't even have to call. You can actually use the app and have it on your phone, which I do. Jan's talking about those lights. I know I read about the wire, the copper wire being stolen out of the lights.
Yeah, the wires, those copper wires are very expensive. And that is the real motivation, many times, to stripping them. And the result is, of course, the lights are out. Lights are out, you know, in my area. It's been several months and it's an ongoing problem.
I wish we can, we need an inventor to invent a light that either doesn't have those wires or can keep the, it's like the...
Well, it could be solar, it could be solar. We need to maybe transform our technology and use solar as opposed to...
There you go. Because it's, I know this has become a problem throughout the city. So whether I'm complaining about the lights, the cops, the, you know, the trash, the alleys, you say, go to L A city dot gov or call your local council office.
Right, or 311.
Or 311. And, you know, just complain. Just let it be known. Do people in Brentwood and, you know, West LA, do they complain more?
I don't know if they complain more. They probably complain, I don't know, maybe differently or, you know...
They complain with campaign contributions. Like, I'm not sure what it is, because it is like, you know, very different. It's a very different environment. So the, I kind of swerved quickly, but I'm hoping to see you at the African Focus Goodwill Awards. It's coming up this, next month. I'll be emceeing it. We just got back from Africa. And it's not just abstract in terms of like, oh, it's a great vacation. I mean, there's actually trade and exchange that is being...
And public service, right?
Yeah.
Make some tanks?
Yeah, we donated water tanks and to some, some schools that really needed them. But I know you've done your part also in encouraging trade both ways.
Well, yeah, it is. It's an opportunity, I think, to kind of leverage relationships that we have here and on the continent. You know, a lot of folks have contacts, they've got friends, they've got connections. And they should try to find ways to leverage it, to use them. And, you know, that's an important part of encouraging trade opportunities, business opportunities between Los Angeles and foreign markets around the world. And that we should not overlook the African continent.
You know, we're in a crazy election season right now, right? And I know you know the former senator, U S Senator from California, the former Attorney General for the state of California, Kamala Harris, who's now rocketed to the top of the ticket. We're hearing she may be getting voted, officially voted on next week, virtually, by Dems.
Well, yeah, the convention will nominate her.
Right.
Virtually, correct.
How does this, how does this affect you? Are you, are you being impacted by what's happening in the Democratic Party?
I'm just watching with a great deal of interest. I certainly support the Vice President. I endorsed her, proud to do so for President. And this is an exciting time to engage and to show the differences, I think, between her, her style of leadership and the, and the former presidents. So it's going to be an exciting time for everybody, and we should all be tuned in.
There's a lot of talk about, you know, whether or not third-party tickets like Cornel West and Dr. Malina Abdullah, or R F K, and whoever his running mate is, that wealthy lady, checkboote lady, whether they make it more likely that we'll have a Trump presidency, or whether they pull in new voters to help down ballot races.
Yeah, I don't know. It's still, it's still an open question. And something that could, it was going to be very, very important. We know that there's always, the tension is always focused at the top of the ticket, but it's the bottom part of the ticket that really kind of wags the dog. So we'll see.
So what's down ballot that you're tracking or that you'd like us to track?
Well, you know, the local races, the local races, school board races, the legislative races at the state level. Those are all, all important, and they build on to what comes next.
So hopefully, we'll see a surge, whether it's from the third-party candidates or the kind of palpable excitement that we're seeing around the Vice President ascending.
Yes, well, you know, her challenge is to bring out new voters and to convert folks who are uncertain or opposed. And I think she can do it. I think she's on her way to doing it.
Yeah, well, I agree. I mean, we've heard a lot of she can't win. Why? How do you know that? You don't know that. But it's, it's interesting, once again, to see a Californian at the top of the ticket, but this time on our side, on the Democratic side of the aisle. And I guess I want to invite you, because we only have a couple of minutes here left, to remind people how to get down with your event this weekend.
Well, again, we're real excited to inaugurate the South LA Greenway. We're going to be having a healthy green event at Gus Hawkins Nature Park on Saturday morning, starting, breakfast, we'll be serving breakfast at nine, the program will start at 10. But it'll be just a family-friendly event, a way to not just, not only enjoy the outdoor space, but to learn about programs and services that are available. As you suggested earlier, it's going to be sound baths, composting, seed planting, nature walks, bird watching, zumba classes, scavenger hunts. So just a fun time for all. There'll be some food, there'll be information, there'll be services available. So it'll just be a chance to come out and really enjoy, enjoy nature. And to mark the beginning of a new day in South LA with the Greenway.
As thus the new ninth.
The new ninth.
But you don't have to be a resident of the ninth. We could commute over from the 10th to the 8th if we want.
Absolutely. Everyone is welcome. Everyone is welcome.
Okay, well, I thank you for doing this event. We've got about a minute here. What do you want to leave us with, Councilmember Price?
Well, you know, the environment is important. It's important for us all. Frequently, underserved communities certainly have been left out and short-changed. But the effects of climate change, pollution, impact our communities worse than others. And so events like this, I think, are going to be important to increase the awareness, increase understanding, and to encourage folks to become more active. As I said, we hope that the greatest beneficiaries of this Greenway idea will be our youth, who will be out biking, who will be walking, who will be out enjoying each other and themselves in ways that they have not before. And at the same time, linking up to various parks along the way that are designed to help, to assist, and to inspire and encourage. So we hope everyone will come out on Saturday, nine o'clock, at Gus Hawkins Nature Park for our Greenway kickoff.
That's how you build community. Councilmember Kern Price, thank you so much for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
It is a Talking Point Tuesday, so we're about to get into it, slaying and defeating all of the ridiculous things we tell ourselves and each other. That's next on K B L A Talk fifteen eighty.
K B L A fifteen eighty, Santa Monica.
I'm Mike Moore. Here's the latest from the Black Information Network. The U S is rolling out a new aid package for Ukraine. The Biden administration announced yesterday that the U S will soon send $200 million in air defenses and other weapons to Ukraine. Former President Donald Trump is coming to Illinois this week. His campaign says he's attending the National Association of Black Journalists Convention in Chicago tomorrow. Trump will participate in a Q and A with political journalists that will concentrate on issues facing the black community. In Memphis, Tennessee, the trial for the men accused of killing African-American rapper Young Dolph is now scheduled for September. Action News Five reporting Justin Johnson and Cornelia Smith were originally scheduled to go before a judge in March before the trial was moved to June and now set to start September 23rd. And that's the latest. I'm Mike Moore from your 24/7 news source, the Black Information Network and B I N news dot com.
Bank of America has powerful digital solutions for local and global businesses so you can make every move matter. Visit bankofamerica.com slash banking for business to learn more. Bank of America, N A. Copyright 2024.
This is the K B L A Sports Minute with Ray Richardson.
The U S women's basketball team had no trouble at all in their first game in the Summer Olympics in Paris. They beat Japan by 26. Fifty-six straight wins for the U S women in Olympic competition, a streak that started in 1992 in Barcelona. Asia Wilson had 24 points and 13 rebounds. Next game for the women's team is Saturday against Belgium. The U S men's basketball team is off until Wednesday.